Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome back. I hope everyone had at least some vacation in your time off from council. I know that some people took some good trips. There's been short trips, but I hope everybody got some break and some fun. You earned it. First thing today as usual is a committee report. Although it says "Referral first," but.
That's what I was going to give.
Yeah, committee referral first. And items of interest. I'm the mayor, city council, and city manager. And there's been an awful lot going on. I'll just whip through some things. Wanted to say once again to folks out in the community, especially Demi and our city folks who were involved. It was a great Eugene celebration. We had wonderful weather. We had a huge amount of people show up. Want to thank the councillors who participated. Thank Lucy the Dog, who also participated and did a really good job. Want to actually say, and we were talking about this earlier, how fortunate we were that the E-Web accident that happened during the celebration did not happen when people were sitting there watching the parade. It could have been a really, really bad accident, so we have a lot to bring to mind. We want to recognize that we just celebrated Labor Day and remember the contributions of organized labor, our work week, stopping child labor, safety in the workplace, right to bargain, and having a voice in the workplace. Really important issues to celebrate. Efforts are underway to try to save the post office. You probably know that there are two groups that I know of kind of working on it. One is the Lane County History Museum is interested in it. And then there's another group that is interested in it, it's coming to be R.T.S.D.M., and that's a group called Poem. And then there was a great article in the Invision Eugene, and I think one of the main things that that does is bring people's attention and also create the focus for people who are working together on the future of our community. Got some mail concerning speeding vehicles and bikers, pedestrians coming too close to each other, police response. Certainly heard a lot, and George will probably talk about this, but Sandy Drive has a fair amount of a male on our way there working it and more power to him. During our vacation, we were also recognized, Eugene, Oregon, as the sixth safest city in the country in terms of the number of traffic accidents. Must be doing something right, you spread all those comments around. This morning, councillor Ortiz, Andrea and Mike were there with me as we had a chance to. Congressman DeFazio brought the chair of transportation, the House, Overstar, kind of an Overstar here, and we did a presentation on Franklin Project, and it seems satisfied with the breakdown, and very grateful to have him here and hope that helps us get that project done. Tonight, I am meeting with the mayors over the Act as we get ready for the presentation for the Oregon Transportation Commission on the formation of the Act. Stay tuned, I'll keep you up on that, and it may take a little more later, but I'll move on to somebody else now. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll start by saying I was very happy to attend Congressman Overstar's and Congressman DeFazio's briefing with you this morning, and I thought the mayor did a fantastic job of representing the city and outlining the project on which we've all been working, and I thought she did a fantastic job. I was happy, on the 26th, to attend the Workforce Partnership Lunch, and I was just now trying to remember all of the awardees, and I remembered that one of them was Glory B. and the other was, I'm sure that Betty will, excuse me.
Amy.
I was trying to remember the others to say congratulations to them, and I badly mangled that, so I'm hoping that Betty and Andrea can fix that. Also had the opportunity to attend the Fire EMS graduation of Class 13 on the 3rd, which will be the last graduating class of the Strictly Eugene's Training Course, and the next ones will be merged with Springfield, and that was a wonderful ceremony, and congratulations to our new firefighters. And then I had the chance, as was reported today, to attend E-Web's board meeting last night, and will be probably speaking more to that when we get to that item on the agenda.
Do you think?
Maybe so. Hard to say.
You have to parts from the article, too.
I didn't pass along the link, though, Andrea, did I?
Okay, George.
Well, I, too, attended the Fire and EMS graduation and the Lane Workforce Partnership Awards banquet, which, pretty good turnout. It was an excellent turnout, so. This is just a sampling of the snail mail that I've received about a problem we're having on Sandy Drive with the condition of the street. There's a couple photographs attached. If you want to just pass around and take a look at it. It's one of those county roads that we acquired and have not done anything with it, and I think what brought this all to a head was when they were doing a resurfacing recently on Oakway. They used part of Sandy Drive to stage some of the heavy equipment and broke down what was already a broken-down road. So, they've been getting inundated with letters, emails, and phone calls from people asking to try to get a resurfacing, similar to what they did on our radio. Been working with John and Kurt and Corey, and might be able to get a meeting with the people and Kurt and John and I later on this month, but I want to assure people that I'm doing the best I can to move Sandy Drive up on a priority list, if there is one, and we'll see what we can do about getting that done. I will be putting out a motion. Do you want to go around the table and then come back?
Yes, I'll call you after we get through that.
Okay, all right. So, other than that, I could go back to work next Tuesday. I'm excited about that, so I'd be glad to go back.
Good, George. Jennifer?
Well, as before, I took the term "break" quite literally. I have spent the last three weeks with family and friends.
Great. Good to meet you.
I, too, took the "break" fairly literally, although last week I attended the Police Commission Public Hearing on the downtown exclusion zone, and I kind of thought that there wasn't anything new to hear about it, but I was wrong. There were some good new viewpoints expressed that I thought synthesized some of my thoughts about it pretty well. Other than that, I would like to also, I would also like to thank all of the past workers, organized labor, the people that gave us the weekend. I want to say thank you very much for that. Really appreciate it.
Nice, George. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad some, but he got to take a break because I was, my job kind of geared up, and then there was, I was just trying to be social and just go to socially appropriate things, but I ended up doing quite a bit, so.
The socially inappropriate?
Well, no. On work-related stuff, so. I met with the downtown neighbors. I didn't make it to their last meeting because of family commitment, and so I had a cup of coffee with them and visited with them, and they had some concerns about the way that the police department, you know, puts people there in the summer, and then in the winter they go back to the schools, and I, you know, we kind of talked about how the funding was going to be happening for to get those committed officers down there. That's, the Wednesday that we, was our last meeting, I actually had a bunch of neighbors to the house, and Chief Kearns and the mayor came, and I can't remember the name of the officer that came. I can't believe it.
See, it's going around.
I know.
Having these moments.
Anyway, my neighborhood was very happy that Chief was there and heard their concerns, and so it was, it was a good, good time. They were there about three hours. I attended the El Rapa Open House on the Baxter Permit. It's up for review, so there'll be a public hearing on that if people want to get involved in seeing what they have to say about that. I went to, as did Chris. We were at Peter DeFazio's town hall meeting. That was always inspirational. He's a good speaker. I really appreciate what he has to say. I did go to the Public Safety Zone Hearing, and there was a lot of information there that, I was glad that it was there. There were some good questions asked, and I think, I thought it was a good, good outcome. I've gotten phone calls on the EMX line on West 11th. I've had calls from my neighborhood about the horses on Roosevelt, and I spoke to the code enforcement gentleman, and he assured me that it's legal to have horses because there are seven acres there, and so there's like an acre per horse in the code here, which I kind of found ironic when people were talking about chickens, that, you know, you can have horses here, and so we can have horses, llamas, emus, sheep, goat, and cows, but you have to have the property for that. So, I thought that was really interesting. I went to the open house of Volunteers of Medicine, which was the other recipient of the awards, and they moved into the building in Springfield, so I crossed the bridge over there, and it's a beautiful building. They'll double their capacity to help people get primary care, so I think that's really great. And one last thing is I went to a conference in Portland, and it was Women in Government. It was for Latina leaders, and I was really inspired by it. It's the national model with the League of, National League of Cities. What was inspiring was a room was filled with women in their 30s, and I just felt like, oh, this is really cool. There was a lot of young women. It was real obvious that we were not the youngest group there. There was a couple women that, you know, came up to us and that were, you know, maybe had been there before us, and, but it was just really inspiring. There was a lot of young women there, so it gives me hope for the future.
Great.
And I'm glad to be back to work.
So, I believe Beth wants to call Alan. Yep. Disrupt us a little here.
Now for this brief commercial message.
Now for this brief commercial.
Moment of silence for Alan.
Brought to you by the makers of steaks.
You can ask her if he's still on vacation.
There was a third, too, volunteers in medicine.
That was a special recognition.
I think that's all.
There was two awards and a special recognition.
It was Selco.
Oh, that's right.
Is there music to fill this break? If you want to sing.
Welcome to the Conference III Bridge.
Let him know it's open, so he'll hear.
Hello?
Hello, this is Alan.
Hi, Alan. We're doing our.
Check-ins.
Check-ins around the table. I don't know if you have anything you want to add right now.
You have any check-in?
Oh, I just wanted, well, one thing. I just wanted to compliment staff on, the parking staff, Jeff Petrie and his staff, about the way that they've managed and handled the parking permits for the arena parking district. We just had a big event at the Longhouse at the UVO for all of the neighborhood getting their parking permits. A couple hundred people showed up there, and it went off smoothly, extremely smoothly, and they did a great job.
Great. Anything else?
I think I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. Thank you for that. Chris?
Thank you. Betty was also at the Peter DeFazio thing as well, and she actually got a job assignment. I don't know if it actually followed through or not.
Oh, that, not.
Somebody who had a question.
Not the thing today, but yeah.
No, the other thing, yeah. And also the Lane Workforce Awards, that was, that was great. The Eugene Celebration, I got to ride on the bicycle, the tandem-seat bicycle, so that I could steer and the mayor could wave. So, that was an important division of labor that worked out well.
I had to do both.
Huh?
I had to do both, steer and wave.
Yeah, he steered and waved. He had his own bike. He was the racer. And also, on September 1st, 211 officially went online as a dial-up service, which means like 911 for emergencies, if you have a question around, you know, services available in the community, human services, job employment, volunteerism, housing, just a wide range of different subjects, you can call 211. And that is a major opportunity for the entire county. You can call it anywhere in the county and receive services on the 211 line, and it really, it's been online by computer for a number of years, but now it's actually something you can call, and you would think 211, yeah, that's a fun thing to dial up, but it's taken this long to get it going, so that's very exciting. The Alumni Association Chamber of Commerce Tailgate Auction was last Thursday. That was a great event. It's always a lot of fun to see all the people that are there. And then last night was a joint meeting between the LTD Board, the MX Steering Committee, and the West 11th Corridor Study Committee, and they were getting a report on the progress so far on what's happening with MX, particularly focusing on West 11th, and they are in the process of getting response back on their, their big report that they put together, which they will be distributing as soon as they get those comments back. And then that will be passed out to the group. It will be fully digested. There'll be actually a couple of months for people to comment on it, and then it will be coming to us for review in 2011. And so that'll be the time when we begin to talk about what those options might be. It's important to note, for those of us who represent the city council that were there, and George was the other person that was there, is that it's very important that we maintain a very open mind with regard to what's being proposed, and to not draw a conclusion before we have the giant report. And I think for everybody in the room, as well as for us, us public officials, it's important to not have reached the verdict before you see the evidence, and I think that's the standard I'm going by. So, I think it's very important. But it's moving along. It's taking a lot of time, but anything that involves federal oversight and federal money generally does. Thank you.
Betty?
That reminded me of people who say it's either too early or too late to comment on something the city's going to do, and frequently that seems to be true. They say, wait till we have the plans, and then, then the answer is, we've done all this work. It's too late now. I'm getting a lot of calls about MX, but also a lot of information, emails, about the so-called cottages south of 30th. Is anyone responding, any staff? They think they're building more than were planned, and also that they're too close to Amazon Creek, which does not go along with our environmental goals, and I haven't seen that they've gotten any. I suppose they're just being told that it's been decided. Is that it?
I'll have to follow up. I don't know who specifically responded to what, but we'll find out.
Gabe Flock has, he got a similar letter, I think, but I don't think they've got, I don't think they feel that they've been heard or that their concerns have been considered. And I walked to the celebration, I walked on my feet, two feet, with my four-footed friend, Lucy. I attended the union picnic on Labor Day, where there were lots of people and lots of politicians. Workforce Partnership has been discussed enough, I guess we will not. I also attended the executive committee meeting of the Workforce Partnership. John Lightley is the new president. We are not meeting at all in September because the executive director is going on his honeymoon. The Invision Eugene, I saw the committee members in the paper, and I think some of those people quit a long time ago. I wonder if that is up to date, the list of people who are on that committee. You talk about safety, pedestrian safety. I know, well, I've met one person. I personally know two people whose friends, one husband and one friend, have been knocked down by cars downtown in the last few months, and I, I've brought this up over and over. It is really dangerous to cross the streets downtown because of the people who think that right turn permitted means right turn required, apparently, and don't look for pedestrians at all. I hope that we can start, it seems to me we could make a lot of money just by having the police stand out there and watch the cars that almost hit people, finding them. I don't know whether those two people who hit people got tickets or not. One person, I think, was too upset to, well, you know, you get a little upset when you're knocked down. He was too upset to find out if they were giving a ticket or not. And about what George said about, I'll take another second and a half, what George said about Sandy reminded me of Whitback Boulevard, which is old news now, but the city allowed a developer to break down that street, and we never paid the people, never fixed the street, we never did any sort of thing for the people who live there. Thank you.
City manager?
Just a couple quick things, Mayor. Tuesday is the next go-around for the Invision Eugene, the Community Resource Group, so that, I think, will be a great conversation. On the 28th, I know the mayor and perhaps others will be on a walkabout around the university like last year, meeting with the neighbors out there. The Sunday on the 11th is Book for the Evening, the Library Foundation fundraiser, and so I would encourage people to support that. And then, just, I just want to say a thank you to Billy and Isaac for the summer in the city this year. I think they just did such a fabulous job.
They did a great job.
I think it was just nice to bring folks downtown. And then lastly, we have Catherine Stevens out at the airport, who was just awarded an Excellence Award by the Airport Northwest Chapter, the American Association of Airport Executives, and this is really for professionals in the field that are not the director, that are in communications operations, some of those kinds of things. It's actually a really nice award to be recognized by your peers, and so it's just another example of what the kind of talent we have on staff, so. We're great to be back.
Well, I just, my memory came back to me about who was at my house, because I was really embarrassed. Lieutenant Tom Icorn was with there, and he did a fabulous job with the neighbors, and he took notes, and I'm assured that he has followed up with the concerns that they have.
I wanted to ask all of you to consider, and everybody who's listening to consider, because I'm going to do my Never Leave Any Stone Unturned for Supporting Downtown, so there's a block party on Friday, the Broadway Pearl Area Block Party. They've been working really hard on it. There'll be games. There'll be lots of things to look at, to buy if you choose, and it'll be a lot of fun, and they are linking up with a shed. There'll be entertainment on a stage, out on the streets. It's going to be a lot of fun things, and we hope everybody will come down. And the biggest thing, I think, for us as a city is, not only is this to give a shot in the arm to those businesses in that area, but they're raising money for the LCC project. So, it is a combination of one part of the downtown community trying to do something to support the re-energizing of our downtown that we're also focused on. So, I'm hoping we will all try to find some time to go by and say thanks and be part of it. Maude Kearns Teen Art Show on Friday night. Saturday, I just couldn't let that go by without, because it's coming, is the anniversary of 9/11, so it's pretty, a lot of very controversial things happening in the country around it, but here at home, our BET memorial at Alton Baker Park is, new names have been added to it, and they're going to have a ceremony on 9/11 on Saturday, and so I know they would like you all to come. It's Alton Baker, Skidderbutte. Excuse me, thank you for catching my misspeak. And same day, we are dedicating the Delta Ponds Bridge, so that's two wonderful things, so.
They're both at the same time.
I think they switched it, so they're not at the same time.
Yeah, there's some time difference there.
Do you know that?
The time is at 10:00.
Both being very important.
Take a bike from Skidderbutte over to the Delta Pond. Might have to do it quickly, but you can.
Anyway, good new things happening and remembering things that are important to remember, so, special day. All right, so we're going to move on now to, we have a motion that George Polling wants to put on the table. I think most of you have been alerted to that, but George will sort of tell you why we're moving it right now.
Okay, thank you. One real quick thing, at 10:30 on Friday, they're doing a ribbon cutting at the new fire station at the airport also.
Oh.
So, that's up and running, so. And I apologize for getting this out so late, but it wasn't until actually yesterday afternoon that the mayor and the city manager and I had a chance to sit down with folks and discuss this and bring this, bring this to everybody's attention. But several months ago, we were very disappointed when we found out that the VA was not going to choose the 12th and Willamette site to build a new VA hospital, and there was an article in the local newspaper how it was going to piece cells property over in Springfield. Unbeknownst to everybody, there was actually two pieces of property still being considered by the VA hospital. We, as a council, made a dedication to do what we could to get a VA hospital located within our city. In fact, we were willing to invest millions of dollars from our urban renewal district and expand the district boundary in order to do this. We have an opportunity now to, as a council, voice support for building a new VA hospital inside our city, and at this point, all we're being asked for is the support and to have our city manager direct staff to work with the Arling Company in bringing the VA hospital to a seven-acre parcel in Crescent Village. Two reasons why I'm very supportive of this is, one is because it's in my ward. Actually, there's more reasons. Another reason is it's going to put, if they get this project, it'll put 200 people to work immediately in the construction business. And once it's open, it's going to bring in some pretty high-end paying jobs. Another reason, the most important, is that we will be the home of a facility that will be available to our veterans, and we're going to be getting a lot more of those folks coming in as the drawdowns of the troop continue in both Iraq and Afghanistan, and also as the Korean and Vietnam-era veterans get older and older, they're going to need the medical attention. And this facility is designed for veterans. It's not like a hospital, it's more like a clinic, but it's something that I think we as a city should be proud of, that they're, the DLS is working at our city to build a facility. So, in light of that, I would, my team proposed a motion, and that is, I move to direct the city manager to work with Arling Company in support of bringing the VA clinic to North Eugene.
Second?
I've got a question. Yeah, I would like to see, that's funny, okay, there. What exactly does a mean direct the city manager to work with Arling Company? What is that? What's the guy, in Taylor, many terms?
Yeah, I think what we would do is spend some time with the staff at Arling Company,
learn more about their proposal, the proposed project that the VA would be looking at. Our understanding right now is that there isn't any financial commitment that they're asking for, and so this is not asking for any financial commitment at all. But if we work through that process, we would work with them if there are some things that we could do to help support that project, either bring them back to the council, or maybe there's some land use kinds of things that we would need to be considered as they move forward, just to work through that. So, I think initially, we'd want to get our staff up to speed on what their, what their proposal is, what the VA might be interested in, at least understand that as we move forward.
Correct. With the understanding that anything would have to come back to council?
Would have to come back to council for any financial or any of those kinds of things.
Well, I'm totally supportive of this motion. George, I'm glad to hear that the city of Eugene is still in the running for this hospital or this clinic. It's just interesting how one of the reasons that I got involved in city council is back on our table. I think that property was zoned for a hospital years ago, and they moved across the street. So, I'm just really glad that we're, that, I really hope this comes.
Okay, I've got Betty, and then Chris, and then Mike, and I don't know if Alan, do you want to be in the line here?
I'm not the type.
Okay, Betty.
How much staff time? You said there's no financial commitment, but staff time is the same as financial commitment, isn't it?
This would be like any other project, when there's proposals that come in, not infrequently, they can be small or large, staff will always sit down with a builder or developer or property owner or some, or business to try to better understand, so it's, it's the kind of work that we would normally do.
So, it's not persuading the VA to?
No, we would not be in contact with the VA. Our contact would be with.
So, it would just be one or?
It's the kind of work that we would do on various proposals.
So, why can't Melissa Lee do this without us?
I don't know if, I don't know if he can or cannot do it without us. I think what looking for right now is just to have a support statement from the city council, which then also can be relayed on to the VA, which then, I think, sends a message to the VA that we would encourage and would want them to locate in Eugene, so they're going through their selection process. They know that they have a supportive elected body.
Thank you. Chris?
Actually, I think it raises a good, a good point that is worth talking about for just a moment, and that is, I think the VA is very conscious of whether or not the community in which they're considering placing a facility is supportive of placing that facility, and I think for that reason, our vote to support, I think, is an important part. And I think for that reason, our vote to support, I think, is an important part of the overall encouragement of that project. And while I don't envision us getting on an airplane and flying to Washington DC to advocate for it, I do think if the opportunity arose and we were asked if we were supportive of the project, I would absolutely encourage us to say, yeah, we would love to have a VA hospital here, and we would like to do what we could to smooth the way and facilitate that, just as we would do with any other desirable development. So I don't want to limit you by saying, we vote to support and that's it. I think if you vote to support having a hospital here, that explicitly says you are going to work to help that hospital locate here, including demonstrating to the VA that we want to have a hospital here.
I've got Mike, and then George.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree entirely with what Chrissy said, and what George said, and a couple others here. And I guess I would add, for the sake of lending our support, and so that the VA folks are very clear about this, that I see this too as more than just the jobs that, some of the people that work there and the construction portions of this, but, excuse me, helping vets as they're returning to our community is an opportunity, as Andrea is put forward, is so important, is, this builds entire careers for folks in our community for long-term. And this is, I think this is critically important, that we be a part of helping folks who've served our country this way. So I'm absolutely in full support of the manager and the staff being able to do what is, you know, whatever we can to be of help within the bounds of the kind of things we've talked about around downtown as well, so.
I guess I would just add, before calling on George, that not only does this allow us to try to do our part to take care of returning vets, it's really in line with what we said we've been wanting all along. And what we said we wanted was to, for that to be located in our city. So this is right in line with what we've been. George?
Just real quickly, here a couple of months ago, my wife and I were at a local shopping center, and a gentleman approached us, and it was obvious that he was in very serious medical condition. And he walked up and he asked for $12 for gas to get to the VA hospital in Roseburg. Now, you don't go panhandling for money and ask for a specific amount. He had to figure out how much it was going to cost him to get to the hospital in Roseburg. And he actually asked for our name and phone number when we gave him the money, he says, because I can read, get the money reimbursed to you as soon as I get down there. We don't need to be sending our veterans that live in our community to Roseburg if we have an opportunity to have a hospital for them built in our community. We need to do everything that we can to land that hospital in our community for the veterans. And it's my understanding that the site was actually selected, or not selected, but the site was discovered by the VA people when they came out here, when they were doing their original search of the other properties that had originally put in for this. So it wasn't a deal where Arlene Company had gone out and solicited, like everybody else. They were actually contacted by the VA and says, hey, I understand you got this parcel, can we take a look at it? So, you know, it's a great location, it's what they're looking for as far as a lot of different amenities that they have. And I just think that we need to send a statement to the VA and to our community that we're here to support our veterans.
I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. There's seven here, how about you, Alan?
Yeah.
Eight in favor, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, our major work session item today is the next steps in our city hall space planning. We've got a lot of great things underway in the community, a lot of feeling like we're moving forward. This is a piece that we've had on hold for quite a while, and just coming forward again. So on with the conversation.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll briefly introduce it, and I'll turn it over to Christie to give a brief presentation. We have purposely tried not to overwhelm you with information that we have gone through multiple times before. And as the mayor mentioned, we have had this conversation really for years. And for the last several months, we have purposefully put it in abeyance pending the final outcome of the police department moved to 300 Country Club. As we know, that's consummated as a deal, and so we want to come back and finish the discussion, continue to have the discussion around what do we do with city hall. So with that, Christie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, and thanks for coming back here today to talk about city hall. I apologize it's taken this long, but some good things have happened in the meantime. So Mike Penwell and I will be providing the presentation, and also giving you lots of opportunity to ask us questions as we go through. The presentation is relatively short. What we're hoping for today is that we can have conversation about the proposed plan that we're going to lay out, and your suggestions, concerns, ideas, and also a little bit of thinking into the future. Where are we headed 20 years from now? What do we want city hall to look like, function like, and how will that work in the future? So with no further ado, let's go ahead and launch into this.
We're going to lay out, and your suggestions, concerns, ideas, and also.
That's how much delay there is.
Where are we headed 20 years from now?
Tell Alan he can't do that.
So, as I said, one of the things I think that we have tried to keep in mind as we're looking into the future is, what is the vision for the 20-year vision for city hall, and even beyond that? And one of the things that John has alluded to is that we're not going to spend a lot of time today going over a lot of information that you already know. We know that there are structural and mechanical deficiencies, and also space limitations within the existing facility as it is today. In its heyday, when it was built in 1964, I think that city hall was a great place. And I think it's lived its life, and we've gotten a lot of use out of city hall. But at this point in time, I think that it's time to move on to a different structure that will work better for us in the future. As we talk about, I look in the future, and I had a chance to talk with several of you, and also go back and look through a lot of the materials. As you know, over the last 10 years, we've compiled a lot of data, have received a lot of feedback from the public about what to do about city hall. And as I talked with all of you, a lot of the comments that, feedback that we were hearing is very similar to the feedback that we received over the course of the 10-year period. We're looking to have a city hall that really builds a connection to the community. And by that, one of the examples might be is that we have a cultural center in city hall that really draws people in, it's a place where people want to gather, a place where people want to come to meet. For me, I told several folks that a goal long-term is to have a city hall where people, when the visitors come to town, they say, I want to take you by our city hall, it's a really great place. Not because it's an ostentatious place, or, you know, this Taj Mahal, but because it reflects our community values. And so I think that that's something that I heard echoed also, not exactly that way, but from all of you. A service efficiency, the ability to consolidate the services that we have, so that not only can we provide them more efficiently in the way that we deliver them, but as people are coming in to receive service, that it's easier for them to access. A sustainability, a facility that supports, that is productive long-term. By that, what we're talking about is not just the, you know, how it's built, but how it can save money long-term, how it functions over the long haul, so that we can actually reduce costs. Civic pride, you've heard that mentioned several times, talked about civic pride, it's a lot about the facility as well. And then the last thing is a fiscally prudent solution. We're living in a time where resources are limited in their availability, and we need to make good choices with the dollars that we have available. May include things like phasing a project, or really being mindful of when we may go out and ask for a bond measure or something like that. So anyways, as we think about that in the discussion, this was something that we took into consideration for our proposal. Two points of direction that I'd like to refer to, that we also use for our decision-making process, were, one, that was in July 2007, and at that point, council directed the city manager to use the existing city hall site for the plan and design of city hall. Now, that decision point and direction came after a very thorough review of numerous different sites. I believe there were more than 20. Mike probably can recite them off the top of his head. But, so that was one of the bases that we used for our proposal. And the other one is the direction that we received from you last July, which you directed the city manager to return with a transition plan for moving non-police-related services out of city hall, and develop a process for future uses of the existing city hall site. And that's what we're here to do today. So our proposed plan is to use the existing city hall site to build a 800,000, approximately 100,000 square foot facility. Why this site, we kind of talked about that a little bit. It was thoroughly vetted over the course of all the process that we went through in discussion with the public. And the other reason is, we own it. It is a size, a piece of land that is the right size to do what we need to do, and it is also in, close to the downtown core. 100,000 square feet, we didn't arrive at that arbitrarily. That was information that we pulled out from the master planning documents that we have put together. And 100,000 square feet, now, as John mentioned, with the police facility moving, it changes the footprint of what we will need to have in the future in terms of what we build. And so 100,000 square feet plus or minus seems reasonable. The cost projection for the proposed plan is 40 to 50 million dollars. And that's based on a 4 to 500 dollar square foot cost. And if you think about the LCC education site that they're building, their estimate for the 90,000 square foot facility at 35 million is around $389 per square foot. So we're right in the ballpark. The other thing that should be noted in terms of the difference in square foot cost is that we will have to pay for the financing of the borrowing, the funding. And so that is also added into a 4 to 500 dollar square foot analysis. The next piece that we would need to be working on is developing a financing plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. And one of the things I think is really important that we think about for long-term financing is, is that the city hall and the financing for city hall is considered in the context of all the broader bond measures that we may be looking at over the course of a period of years, and kind of talk about those things collectively. And we have a proposal for that discussion timeline. The next thing that we would plan to do is transition the non-police-related services out of city hall. So that would be all of you, the city manager's office, the court, and human resources to temporary space. And we would coincide to transition out of city hall with the planned steam conversion, e-web steam conversion, which is scheduled for sometime fiscal year 13. The short-term plan, the next thing is, so we're out of here, and then what is the short-term plan for the existing city hall site, depending on what the timing is of when we may be able to build, or whatever we decide to do on this site long-term? And so we would propose some sort of interim plan process and have some more discussion with you all about that. So this is a very, very, very high-level timeline. I would not, it's more just a place where we can look together at some sort of a structure that kind of points to some key points. So on the top, it's actually supposed to be a purple color, those two boxes on the top, and they are sort of key points for things that will be happening at city hall. In fiscal year 2012, the police will move to 300 Country Club. So we know that transition is scheduled to happen. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, in fiscal year 13, e-web will, we will need to do the steam conversion for this facility. So in preparation for those things, we need to begin the discussion now. And what we're recommending is that we return to council, probably next spring, sometime, you know, a six-month or eight-month period, with a concept plan for city hall and a proposed financial strategy. And one of the financial strategy discussion could coincide with the fiscal year 12 budget planning process, and also in line with a sequencing discussion that I believe that we will be having with council in the next few months. In fiscal year, you know, sometime around the end of fiscal year 12 or the start of fiscal year 13, as we talked about earlier, transitioning people out of this facility for a temporary period of time would need to begin happening. So the next, the box, if you look on the top of the screen there, it says, complete finance plan, plan, design, and construct a city hall, and the timeline to be determined. That's the bigger part of the discussion that I think that we need to continue to have next spring, which really talks about the type of financing that we want to pursue, when we want to pursue it, and how that will impact our timeline for the construction, planning, and design phase. And so all of those things that are in dotted boxes are more just proposals at this point. The other things on the slide right now are just sort of reminders, and these are not all of the financing plans that we have out there right now, but the last year for the street bond payments is in fiscal year 14, so that will be a decision point. The last year for downtown urban renewal, district tax collection, the estimated timeline for that being completed is fiscal year 17. And then fiscal year 19, it'll be the last year of the 1996 public safety bond payments. And those are, you know, just a few of them, just to sort of give you an idea of the context of all the things that we need to be considering as we move forward. There we go. So the motion that is proposed is that to direct the city manager to return to the council with a concept plan for city hall and proposed finance strategy. I want to say that one of the things that we implied in this motion that wasn't specifically called out was that it was a concept plan for the existing city hall site, based on the direction that was given in 2007. Close the phone, sorry. And then the other piece was timing the financial strategy discussion with the fiscal year 12 budget process, and so I just wanted to point those things out. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to you all for questions, comments, discussion.
Thank you very much. I've got Mike, and Betty, and Hugh. I just want to make a couple of comments. I know that you didn't want to regale us with things that you know we already know, but I'm always reminding that people who watch don't necessarily know what we think we all know, so. So I would just say for the public that are listening, you toured this building right now, you would have to take note of the level of disrepair. You would have to take note of leaks and cracks and an energy sieve, and you would have to take note of empty spaces, and you would have to take note of some long-term deteriorations. And based on the decision, to try not to throw good money down a hole, but nonetheless, the other side of that is, we've lived in a place for a number of years that I personally feel is a pretty shameful-looking city hall, because to me, no matter what function the city hall plays in your life, it's an expression of your community. And currently, it's not a very good expression of our community from my point of view. I like the idea of a city hall that's modest and functional and architecturally interesting, green, connected to the city in ways that you talked about. I want to express some appreciation to Council Clark here for his interest in an alternative site, which I know he'll spend a great deal of time talking to us about.
At least three minutes.
But I also want to say that the other thing that I feel right now is, we have so much effort underway with so many things in motion that feel really positive about rebuilding our downtown. And I can't think about everything that we've worked so hard and so long to put in place without thinking about the role that this building should have in doing what we're already in the process of doing. I know that Otto Patisha is having his arts and architecture class really do a lot of work on possibilities for this site. So we're at a very pivotal moment. And the only other comment I want to make is, I know in terms of building, things take time, but the city manager knows that I feel like we're late already. And so I understand that we have, we're living in very tough times, and I understand we have to do this in a very thoughtful, actually kind of humble but smart way, responding to the needs of our community. But I just think we've been sitting here looking at this building in this condition, and I haven't mentioned the most important thing of all, it is not safe. So with that, Mike, your first up.
I agree with absolutely everything the mayor just said. And I think that some of the things that I've written about try to address all of the things that the mayor just said. I won't review all of the things I've written about, because perhaps some of you have had a chance to read that. I will try and comment on a couple of other things. I do have an amended motion to make. I'll put the first one on the table when the time's right, and then go to that. I'll put the first one on the table when the time's right and then go to that. On your timeline, and by the way, Christie, great job and appreciate all the hard work. Very, very good job presentation. Council did also give direction to the manager outside of these two points presented here for us to explore the option of locating the City Hall at the E-Web facility. And the manager did write them a letter. And for whatever the reason, we didn't have as thorough a conversation about that as I think we could have. We didn't have a council presentation on the details or the facts surrounding what that might cost, what that might look like, and what sort of things one might want to do in order to create that option and have it as a realistic one for the discussion. And it's been proposed here that we allow the staff to come back to us in six to eight months with some planning. And I suppose that's what my motion will try to address, is to look at all the plans. I see Mr. Beck in the back of the room, and I think we did a wonderful job of having the solution for our next police facility originally proposed as a 30-some million-dollar solution. And we found the adequate building that could do it and not construct something new. It became a $16 million solution. And I think that same concept can work here as well. I have some, some real concerns about the bond timing. A $50 million bond passing next year, the year after, the year after that gives me great pause with what the county is facing, what Human Services is facing, what the school districts are facing. And what I see is that an intelligent organization should have a Plan B. I'm not suggesting we choose one, we choose the other. I'm saying let's look at both of them. Let's intelligently look at, now that the E-Web Board has unanimously said that they have an interest in discussing this with us and an interest in selling it, let's at least explore the option and make sure that we are making our decision based on all the facts and intelligent information. So that's what my message would, or rather, that's what my amendment would address, is that we should be looking at all the facts before we make a decision of this nature, especially one that, that has some precarious nature when we're asking the public to join us on it. And we should have a Plan B as an intelligent organization. So I hope you consider that.
Thank you. Betty, number two.
First, I want to respond to some things the mayor said. Deficiencies, disrepair, deterioration, neglect, all of that is true. And we could have taken care of that, and we still could. And not safe, I don't know why, if it's really not safe, I don't know why we haven't taken care of it before now instead of just talking about it. We also, you mentioned the space. We have space that is unused and space that will be, and future space that will be available. When the fire department left here, I assumed that we would find a way to use that space. It was, it's a good deal of space. No one, we just act as if that doesn't exist. And the police will be leaving, not to a place of my choice, but they'll be leaving. And there's more space. So we could find a way to make use of that space, which gets me to the information that I'm disappointed we didn't get, which would be, I thought we were going to get information on costs and details about possible rehabilitation and remodeling of this building. And uses, also, I had asked for information on how much space we are currently renting, and I still haven't seen that exactly where and how, and when those people could come back into this building if we remodel and reuse. There's no information here about what we could do, how much it would cost to clean this place up and make it safe and use the space that's here. And I would, I think we should consider all of that before we make any decisions. As for the E-Web, which I know is going to come up, I found it interesting that the council too often does exactly what the manager suggests. In their case, they did the, the board did the opposite when the manager made a good But I'll say more about that later after Mike does his motion. Thank you.
First round.
Thank you. Well, I think we ought to look at all the options. And I'm, I'm going to vote for Councilor Clark's motion, although I don't like the E-Web site. I like this site. I think we, I think we should do it here. The reason I don't like the E-Web site is, first of all, that building, I read the paper today, according to E-Web themselves, it needs $22 million in upgrades. And then it's going to cost 15 to 20 million to buy it. Ballpark figure. So that's 35 million, $40 million right there. That's, that's not too close from what we're talking about to build a whole new building here. We'd have to move people out and park it somewhere while we knock this one down and scoop it out and then rebuild, you know? But that's doable. So, but I think, but I believe that Councilor Clark is correct. It is an option. It's a credible option, and I think that we should spend a little time looking. And I think that Councilor Taylor is correct. And it's not throwing out the idea of trying to rescue this place. I think that we should, we should still look at that. If you're right, once the police are gone, that's approximately 30,000 square foot. I don't know what the fire station is. 4,000, 5,000, I'm not sure. So I think we ought to, we ought to look at this one one more time. We're well aware of all the deficiencies, you know, the glazing, no insulation, hitch back and all that. But, and I'm just curious, and maybe, I mean, I ask Mike a final question, is I might have asked you this before, but I can't remember if I did or not. So can, can we build on top of this? Is this building constructed to accept another, say, on the second or third story if the foundation was restored up?
It was actually designed for the north wing to have another two or three floors added onto it, but that was several code versions ago. It's been identified as a, as a higher-risk seismic area than the building was designed for, and so the footings aren't adequate to deal with the seismic load. So it'd be-
But they could, pardon me.
It would be quite costly to, to go vertically here.
But it would be possible.
Well, it'd be more expensive than tearing down and rebuilding the same. Because we'd have to go down and dig up the footings and completely redo it.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty pricey. Okay. Well, I mean, you know, it is possible, and I think we ought to look at it. But another reason I don't, I'm not real thrilled with the E-Web site is it's on the hundred-year floodplain, I believe. Plus, we're moving, we're moving everybody else out of the center of downtown. It's not really the center, it's kind of, I mean, it's a nice building, it's been, it's been, it's been there all the time. I like the building, I like the site on the river, it's very attractive. It's a good influence. You can call it some modifications probably, but it's, it's off on the sides, on the periphery. This is more central, and I think it goes against one of our goals when we move 150 people out of the center of downtown. We're already doing the, the 40, 50 police, taking them out of downtown. We're supposed to bring people to downtown, not moving them out. So that's kind of a happy reason. However, it's a credible site, I'll give it support. Support, I think we ought to look at it. But this is nice because also this is, this is where the federal, state, county, and city buildings are all right there. So it's a nice one.
Chris?
Mayor, could I get a Q?
Yep.
George said a lot of what I would have said. I am, I am also willing to support Mike's proposal simply, if nothing else, in the spirit of being open-minded. And I think, you know, I mentioned earlier, it's important to be open-minded and look at everything. And if I talked in terms of best possible outcomes, this would be the site. And it has been, since I got on the council, this has been the best possible site. We already own it, it's full block, and for all the reasons George said, it's, it's well situated. With regard to the building that's already here, I've also made no, I've never disguised the fact that the best solution for this building is a couple of sticks of dynamite.
Actually, quarter stick under one pillar.
Yeah, well, you could bring the whole building down. And I, and I think the amount of money that we could spend trying to rehab this building would be enormous. And when you were all done, you would still have an old 1964 building that would, just wouldn't fall down in an earthquake and, and had a new heating and air conditioning system because of the conversion. It wouldn't be the City Hall that this building is going to need for the next 100 years. And I make no, I'm not confused at all about the idea that whatever it is we build, it's going to be for the next 100 years. And is this building the building you want for the next 100 years? And some folks may say, yeah, I love this building. For me, it's not. This is not the City Hall for Eugene over the next 100 years. This site, to me, could be the site for a City Hall, probably should be the site for a City Hall for the next 100 years. So the question for me is, as a, as a responsible thing for staff, let's get them out of the building. I mean, I've talked before about, you know, you buy a ramshackle house because you like the location, you tear the house down, you move in the trailer while you build a new one. I'm willing to move into the trailer for four or five years. I'm absolutely happy to, to move into the trailer because I'm not, not the one moving in the trailer, all of you guys are. But I'm only going to be in the trailer temporarily until we get into a City Hall. So if we're going to choose to get out of here and get into the trailer, that will start a clock running to get a new City Hall. And it would be very important to say we're committed to a new City Hall because we asked everybody to move out and go into the trailer. Whether we rehab or not, that would start a clock. And so that becomes very critical to the timeline. And I'm also very aware, there's a lot of things that are going to be proposed on, on the ballot. And for me, renewing the street bond measure is a no-brainer. We absolutely have to do that, so we've got to take that into account. I'm impressed that you have tried to approach this from the standpoint of how can we get the most municipally responsible yet dynamic and appropriate City Hall for the least amount of money? 400 and 500 per square foot seems high to me, and we would want to sharpen our pencil as much as we possibly could to come in at the best price possible. But I'm not saying that we're way out of line. I think it's reasonable to look at. So I'll support Mike's motion, knowing what my best possible outcome is. But I want to be open-minded and, and, but I am not interested in trying to renovate this building. So that's just my position. That's my preference, is I just don't think that's, that's worthwhile.
Andrea?
Well, this is really interesting. So George, you really were going back and forth there. I'm really curious if you feel so strongly about this site here, why you would look to have staff do an analysis on the E-Web site in an open-minded process? I mean, I think we're looking at, we're constantly telling you guys, don't spend money, you know, do your work faster, quicker, with less. And so I, I was, that's why I was laughing, I was thinking, you know? But anyway, my best outcome would be that we did the fiscally responsible thing. And I don't think buying E-Web. And I don't think the E-Web Board is being fiscally responsible to their ratepayers when they go to them and ask them to move to Roosevelt. In my conversations that I've had anecdotally with people, that really would be an increase in their rate. Somebody has to pay for all of this. And I'm not going to ask the voters to buy E-Web, I'm not going to ask. And if the commissioners dare to put a bond on there, I can guarantee you, I will be one of the first ones on board to work against it because I think it's the wrong thing to do. This isn't the time of the world that we have the opportunities to ask our taxpayers to do more. When people are homeless, when people are hungry, when they don't have health insurance, and we're going to raise their rates. And I help several of my family members keep their utility on, so I'm kind of passionate about this, as you can tell. I think we need to fulfill our, our current commitments to the builders downtown to move in, to help, you know, make sure that those places are, you know, occupied at the, at the amount that we said we were going to do in helping that happen downtown. I support this energy that happens downtown. I think the riverfront property is a pearl, and I would much rather have it be green space or much rather have it be developed, the park that's not developed, you know, that, that is moving to Roosevelt. You know, I can foresee something like on the Portland, on the Portland Riverbank there, you know, where the Marriott is, and you go down and there's these beautiful apartments and places to sit and have lunch. I would really like to see something like that happen with that property. And I'm, it's, it's not my, it's not up to me to ask for that to happen, but I really would like to see that. And the only question I have of staff, and maybe somebody could explain it to me better, is when we first talked about E-Web's property and their ability to sell it, could, we're supposed to have the first right of refusal? And so when would that come into play?
When they declare it surplus.
Under the city code, E-Web has to make a formal request of us or a formal declaration that they're interested in selling it. Once they have made that, we have 30 days, the city manager has 30 days to say he's interested in negotiating. If he doesn't say that, E-Web can sell it to anybody else. If he does say that, we have five years to negotiate.
Oh, my goodness. This could drag on forever.
We don't have to use the entire five years.
This could drag on forever.
And if we haven't negotiated in five years, then E-Web can go ahead and sell it.
Okay. But even if we wanted to get out ahead of ourselves and they wouldn't, during that 30 days, could we give them a, like, say, go for it, sell it?
Absolutely. If they, if they sent something to us today and the city manager tomorrow said we're not interested, then they could sell it to anybody else.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'll just say it one more time. I think that E-Web needs to be as fiscally responsible and accountable to their ratepayers as we do to the taxpayers.
So I just want to point out that while Glenn was talking, the timer was still moving along, so you really haven't-
Oh, that's okay. No, I think I've said enough, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. George Poling.
Well, Chris brought up an interesting point, I've written it down also, about the, the timing of the bonds. The street bond does come up about the same time we're looking at putting a bond measure out possibly for New City Hall. And at the time we had that discussion, it was, do we want to put a 10-year bond out or a five-year bond? It was, let's put a five-year bond out so we can prove to the people in our community that we're fiscally responsible, we're doing what the bond says. So to put a renewal out and something else out, I think we're, we're treading on very thin ice. Betty, personally, I wouldn't mind if we moved everybody out of this building tomorrow into rented space. I would be happy with that. I mean, I, I think this building is, it's a mess. It's an absolute mess. It's unbearable working conditions for our employees, and we need to do something for them. The only problem with doing that is, you know, what do we do with this facility? Do we board it up? Do we plant more grass or do we tear it down and have another pit to deal with? I don't want any more pits, and they're hard to fill.
Pits are the pits.
The question on whether we, we rebuild here or we rebuild on the E-Web property, right now I'm not married to either one of the sites. Although I'm not as convinced as Mike as to what the E-Web commissioners are going to do, I don't think they've heard the end of it. I'm willing to at least support Mike's, Mike's motion to bring back that information in the event that they do sell and it is, you know, it is out there for us. I think what it's going to boil down to, for me, the decision is, what can we get for our dollar? What is the better of the two locations? Is it financially better for us to choose here? Is it financially better to choose the E-Web property if that happens? So at this point, I'm willing to, to support Mike's motion just to see what that's going to look like in the long run.
Okay, Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. For me, this issue of New City Hall is whether or not it's a good business decision to invest in this building. And I think we've answered that question. I have in my mind, given the history and the dramatic needs of this building and the cost of rehabilitation, I don't believe reinvesting in this building is a good business decision. And that's why I'm willing to move from the space and move on. The E-Web building has a little bit of its intrigue for me, not, not that much. I think we're dramatically underestimating the cost. I, I like this site much better. I think in the end it'll be cheaper. I agree with what Andrea said, in the end, I don't think E-Web's going to make the decision to spend a lot of money to, to build a new building. And that site could still be a civic plaza while being in a different format and maybe private hand. I, I understand the choreography and the musical chair plan that we've got coming in front of us. I support that, and want to see it as fast as we can. In doing that analysis, I'd like to see a, a financing option put into the analysis that would have us look at a privately financed and developed building that we would then lease. And the reason I'm looking at that is because it really eliminates the need for us to do a bond. And, and we could pay for that out of, potentially, I would like to see if we could pay for that out of existing operating. And if not, maybe a levy that would be just what we need in order to do the operating of that building with no interest and no closing cost. That would be a much cheaper option. So hopefully that can be, hopefully that's included in the, in the, in the analysis that staff's going to do. Is that, is that true, Mr. City Meunerger?
Yes, yes, we can include that.
Okay. And finally, I guess, I'm, I'm in the camp of, I'd like to see us move out of this building sooner than later. If this option allows us to do that without waiting and figuring out the bonding sequence of all the things that are needing to happen on, on the public side of the, of the, I would like to see it happen as soon as possible. I guess I'm not that intrigued with staff spending too much time analyzing the, the E-Web building. If, if the motion passes, I don't think I'm going to support it because I don't think it's the right way to go. But if the motion passes, I hope we do a preliminary, real quick assessment of whether or not that's even feasible without spending an enormous amount of time.
Okay, thank you. Alan, Jennifer, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm a little frustrated with the motion. I, I would much prefer- I would much prefer to develop, redevelop this site, and as Chris said, we own it and it's a full city block. But I think in the interest of just being able to get it off the table permanently, I think it would behoove us to get those figures, because I don't believe that it is the better financial option. But if we constantly have that question out there, it's really annoying to deal with that. So I'll support the motion only in the interest of getting it off the table.
Well, it does seem, when you listen to everybody around the table, that you may have hit it more than most in that there seems to be some desire to have the information, not to go too expensively into detailed analysis, but at least to give people a, what they think is a real assessment of what's possible with E-Web and what's possible with this site. Although I have to say to you that when I'm listening to you, I'm not hearing, even though those of you who say you're going to vote for Mike's motion here, I'm not hearing you say that this, that going to the E-Web site is your preference. So it's up to you to figure out whether, how much you want our staff to, how much work you want them go to, to keep these two options out there. The manager, you want to say something to that?
Yeah, I'm going to weigh in a little bit on the detail because we've done a lot of analysis on here on the rehab and remodel. And Betty, the reason why we didn't bring it back today is through the master plan process, there was a lot of information. So we'd be happy to redistribute that around cost for rehab and remodel in this particular site. I think a couple of things on the E-Web site, and it sounds like perhaps we're going to do the analysis on that, so it'd be good to get a little bit of feedback on how much detail you really want. There are a couple of factors that will be more difficult and more challenging. For example, that's about plus or minus 80,000 square feet. It's a fixed building. If we, if we want to eventually have more than 80,000 square feet, there's new building to be required. And so part of the analysis, I suspect, would be is building additional new building. So that, I want to make sure we have that kind of understanding. Two, around the price of the property. I think sort of casual conversations about prices of property aren't necessarily reflective of what they're willing to sell the property for. And so I'm not anticipating going in an appraisal on the property, but there's, it will be a little bit more of a casual conversation around price of property. And so it's that level of detail that I want to make sure we're comfortable with. We can analyze, I assume perhaps you want more than just the financial analysis on the concept. Location, I do think, for me, is a particularly significant issue with the E-Web site. Great location, I would love to have the second nicest office on the river, but I think from a location perspective, there's, I have some concerns with that. And so I want to make sure that if we're thinking about beyond just the financial analysis, do we want the rest of the analysis to go with this? I know E-Web provided a triple bottom line analysis to their board last night. I'm not sure how much they sort of spent or the time they did spend on that. I don't know if that's the kind of analysis you're looking for, or is it a much more cursory analysis? So it would be very helpful to get a little bit of feedback on the level of detail that you're looking for, so when we come back next time, you'll be comfortable making a decision on a site.
Okay, I've got Mike, and then Betty, and then Chris, and then George Brown.
Okay. Since I heard five people do this, I'll put the motions, since I heard five people willing to support this, I'll put my amended motion on the table then, and then speak to it if that's all right. So my motion was to move to direct the city manager to return to the council with concept plans for city hall and proposed financial strategies that include the options of the current city hall site and E-Web site. And if I get a second.
I second because I have to.
I'll speak to that and say that Andrea, I couldn't agree with you more. I couldn't agree with you more about the idea of being fiscally responsible, and that's why I'm making this motion, because we don't know. We haven't done the analysis, and I'm glad we're talking about doing it. If it turns out that it's much more fiscally responsible for us to ask for a bond and do it here, then I'll be happy to support that. I'm not married to that as the place where we have to go. I want to do the fiscally responsible thing. It's that, based on what I know so far, that appears to be the most fiscally responsible thing. And so I think it's intelligent for us to get the information and make that decision based on information. For example, the manager mentioned assessments, or, excuse me, appraisals. And I know that the last appraisal was done at the E-Web site and the 10 acres, or the seven acres around it, was $10 million if it was used on, in a private basis, and $12 million if it was used for a governmental purpose. And so not only will E-Web and their ratepayers suffer if they have to sell it to a private party, they will get more money to defray the cost of what they are likely to do anyway if they sell it to a governmental agency and the ratepayer wins. And I think it's an idea that expands what our downtown is. I have an odd notion that this would be a wonderful farmer's market building, much like what they have in Seattle. But that's a separate conversation for a different time. But we consider the E-Web and its adjacent property as part of the downtown plan. Eugene's current downtown plan includes that because it's part of downtown. And I think we ought to be talking about that longer-term vision for downtown and what it includes. And I think how we deal with this property is a part of that conversation. And I think that it's, this is the more fiscally responsible way to go by a long shot. But I think we need to get the information and have the discussion.
Okay, so we've got.
Number two.
You, yes.
I think the, well, I don't want to spend any staff time or money investigating the E-Web site for a lot of reasons. If that's a part of downtown, it's a part that's far from the, removed from the rest of it. And we have worried all the time about the central part of downtown being empty. We still haven't filled it. We're on the way, perhaps. But we should concentrate on that. Another reason for staying in this area is, as has already been said, our proximity to the county. I think that is really important. It's also the proximity to public transit. And I don't think public transit's going to be over by the E-Web building very soon. It's easy for people to come here by bike or bus, and much easier than over there. And I've gone to lots of meetings over there, and I'm familiar with it. It's easier to come here and go out to dinner afterwards, or go out for a drink afterwards than it would be for, I'm talking about the public who want to come to meetings in the evening. Another thing wrong with moving E-Web would be, we're moving a lot of employees out of downtown and their customers. All the people who come, a lot of people pay their bills in person. And those are people who go there, then they might stop by downtown on the way, at least it's in the vicinity. I think it would be a really bad choice, and also abandoning this spot, we can end, the city has abandoned spots in the past. We weren't responsible for Astor's Hall, but the Sears site, the city did. And there may be another one when LCC moves, but we don't want to contribute to any more There's also a question, doesn't E-Web have stampede also? Then is anybody talking about the cost of changing that?
I assume that was a part of their $22 million rehab that they talked about.
Which would, if we were to get that, we would have that. And I think, as Andrea said, I think there'll be a big, I think she intimated this at least, there will be a big uproar when people realize E-Web's considering building a new building. That building is still fairly new, and the ratepayers have paid for that. I'm interested in 100 years for a new city hall. This one's 46 years old, isn't it? Forty-six or?
Probably more than.
No, it's 56. Okay, it's not nearly 100.
It's 45.
Whatever.
It's the year after I was born.
It's not nearly 100 years old, and we want to abandon it. If you neglect anything, it will deteriorate. This place has been neglected. And it's, then my, another question is, couldn't a rehab be incremental and be paid for incrementally? I think the life safety seismic upgrade could be done first, couldn't it? Question.
I think, Mike, you can weigh in a little.
I'm looking at Mike, but.
Yeah, and he can weigh in on the details. Seismic is probably a good example. To just seismically upgrade the facility here is probably plus or minus $5 to $6 million. And the problem is, when you do that, you necessarily have to penetrate into the walls and the ceilings, which necessarily now get into your HVAC systems and things like that. So you can't do that really separate from now touching your other kinds of systems. And so pretty soon, you're moving down the road pretty aggressively, I think. You can weigh in a little bit more if you like. Right. It's, I mean, you can treat any single system in this building individually, but why would we do a seismic upgrade when we have 46-year-old HVAC equipment? And then why would we upgrade the HVAC without taking care of the exterior envelope for energy efficiency? We'd be buying four times the equipment that we'd need. And so it's really difficult in this building to pick it apart and talk about it one system at a time. Once you start, you're in it for, and we've done the analysis, $40 to $50 million to rehab the building, and you end up with a 1964 city hall. So if we want to do that, that's fine, but that's what.
Would it still be a 64 city hall if it were rehabbed and remodeled?
To current code, though. Right. It'd be all to current code and current.
I mean, would it still be, it would be as good as new, wouldn't it? I'm out of time.
Me? Yeah, and in fact, talking about the 100-year building, I don't think this building was built to be a 100-year building. In fact, when I was on the school board and we had to deal with up to 40 different school facilities, some built right after World War II, others built later. South Eugene's a perfect example, unreinforced concrete block. And they had to spend millions of dollars to shore it up, and I still wouldn't depend on that building if there was an earthquake. And that gives you an idea of where we are with regard to buildings built during that era. The specific question, if we're going to look at E-Web, how far, how deep do we go? Just how far do we want to spend on it? I know there have been some appraisals done. I can think of two appraisals that were done when Mackenzie Willamette was looking at that site. And I think you could maybe get those updated, or you could try to see if you could get some sort of extrapolation on those or whatever. I think the issues around what would happen when E-Web announced that it wanted to move. I know that Commissioner Cassidy was not there at the time that Mackenzie Willamette was looking at that facility, but that took two years, and they still didn't do it. So I think another factor to look at is, how long would it take to negotiate the sale of an E-Web building? Because I think that is a factor we have to consider. It could take one, two, three, four years, depending on all the moving parts, because there's a lot of moving parts to vacating a building, building a new building, us moving in, doing the renovations, everything else. And that is a factor to consider. So I think that's why I like this site, because we already own it, we have certainty around the site, we know we could do it here if we needed to. But I'm willing to explore the E-Web site without going into an enormous amount of detail because I don't want to spend a lot of money looking at, but I do want to spend just enough for us to be able to make an informed decision. And so the last thing I'll say is, we will depend on you being, all of you, being very honest and very candid with your assessment. We'll make the final decision on what to do, but we can't make a good one unless you're being real candid with us. And I mean candid with us from your standpoint and also from E-Web's standpoint as well.
George Brown.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't think, I would, I don't think that you need to do a deep analysis of the E-Web site. We already know, I mean, E-Web's already kind of, you know, prepared a report that says it needs $22 million in upgrades, so we could just look at that, just ask them for a copy of it. There's no need to.
Check here, actually.
You know, redo a new one. And then, you know, the staff is, whoever, Planning and Development, Central Services have been aware of all kinds of real estate developments and would surely be able to do a comp, come up with some comps, comparables without hiring, you know, paying for a new appraisal. I mean, like the 300 Country Club Road could probably be used as some kind of a comparable because that was a recent sale of property, significant property, newer building right on the river. So that might be a kind of a comp. So, yeah, I don't think that we need a deep analysis, just some reasonable ballpark figures. We can't know what the final price would be for the property anyway until you enter negotiations.
They actually said that.
So that's, there's always going to be kind of some wiggle room there. So I would say, please don't spend a heck of a lot of time. It's just, it is a credible option, and we need to know, we need to know about it, I think. Thanks.
So I just want to say a couple of things, and then I think we're ready to vote. One is that I think whatever decision you make, you can look at phasing. So there's that. I actually want to say that I think that E-Web's openness to their facility as a possibility for our city hall was a cooperative gesture and not a lack of cooperation gesture. So I want to take it and say, thank you. We may not decide that that is in our best fiscal interests, but we appreciate that the, this other part of us was willing to try to be helpful with us in trying to find a resolution for our city hall. And I want to express that. I do not hear, except from Betty, actually, anybody around, other than Betty, expressing any interest in really looking at a simple rehab as a solution for this property. So I want to sort of lay that to rest, that that doesn't seem to be anything that I've heard anybody else express interest in. It may be that if you end up going toward this site and some kind of new look at this site, it may include something that has to do with the old structure, but it wouldn't be a rehab. It would be a new, a new structure. So I just want to sort of be, unless you want to tell me I'm wrong, that's what I heard around, around the table. And I don't know that we know what's most fiscally.
One second.
So with that, let's vote on Mike's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, one, two and a half.
Come on, Jen, you can do it.
Three, four, okay. And then in opposition, one, two, Alan?
No.
Three in opposition, it passes. And so then, I want to clarify, I, as I listen to people, I heard instruction to the city manager to not go too deeply into this, in, to try to put together some things that would allow people to really have some sense of the fiscal possibilities of both. And then I think the city manager was making, and others of you too, said that there's more to this, and that fiscal is really important. But then you've got to weigh into that your sustainability goals, your triple bottom line look, you have to weigh into it what you're trying to do with downtown, no matter how you, and how you look at that. And so those are the things that you've got to put together to come to, and the city manager is avidly looking for you to make a decision on where, where we're going to be aiming. What we're going to put there is the next, another decision, but where we're aiming is the first thing to get taken care of.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Consent calendar?
Consent calendar.
Oh, consent calendar. Oh, we're all.
Mayor, I moved to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved in second in discussion, three, none. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor, Alan?
Yes.
Eight in favor. Okay, it passes, and that is the end of our business for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.